There we go.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
All right. We'll call the meeting to order. It's nine o'clock. Bill's out. Lori's on Skype. And Sonny is expected to be here, but he's not here right now. So, did everyone get a chance to review the minutes? And if so, are there any corrections, additions, or anything of that nature? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion, second, by Kathy. Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Oh, we have to do roll call vote. Oh, by the way, Lori has a little bit of a delay. So when we're doing anything and we're talking to Lori, we're going to give her a little bit of time because she's got a pretty good delay there. All right, so Jerry, can you call a roll?
Um, Rich?
Present.
Deb?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes.
All right. So that was for the vote, correct? All right. Next approval of today's agenda. Is everyone seeing the agenda? Is there any comments on the agenda? And if not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye through a roll call vote.
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
Here, you might want to mention to the people in the audiovisual room that I can hear them talking in the background. It's kind of distracting.
All right, we got that going.
You're out, Holly.
Travis?
Aye.
And Kathy?
Aye.
That sounds like we're going to have a good fun morning today. Welcome to everyone. There's agendas on the back bookshelf. If you didn't get one, I forgot to mention that earlier. And just make sure everyone has a copy of that if you still desire to have it. PJ, you ready for consent agenda?
Ready to go.
All right. PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
One more comment. I can't hear anything if you guys don't speak into your microphone. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lori. So just a reminder, everyone, make sure you're speaking good into your microphone.
Good to go.
Go ahead, PJ.
All right, consent agenda. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item three, conditional use permit 1744 for Jeff Miller to allow for a vacation home rental on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1744 with 16 conditions. Item four, conditional use permit 1745 for Gold Run III LLC, grade Wickenberg as the owner, Andrew Skull as the agent, to allow an existing caboose to be used as a seasonal dwelling on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1745 with 11 conditions. Item five, conditional use permit 1746 for Matt and Donna Bowman to live in an existing residence while building a new single-family residence on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 1746 to a future planning commission meeting that will be held no later than February 26, 2018, to allow the applicant more time to bring the property into compliance. Item six, conditional use permit 1747 for Harriet Kelly to allow recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary living quarters in the subject property during the summer months in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1747 with 12 conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit 1748 for Vaco Vacation Rentals, Carson Goodwin, Alvin, and Sharon Gulgson as the owners, to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 1748 to the January 22, 2018 planning commission meeting. Item eight, vacation of minor drainage and utility easement, VE 1705, for Paul and Rebecca Frydel to vacate a 30-foot portion of a minor drainage and utility easement and to bring an existing single-family residence with deck into compliance on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of vacation of minor drainage and utility easement 1705 with four conditions. Item nine, minor plat 1746 for Anderson Four LLC, Richard Huffman as the agent, to combine four lots to create Lot A of Anderson subdivision. Staff recommends approval of minor plat 1746 with 10 conditions. Item 10, minor plat 1747 for JK RK Properties LLC, Ryan Kasky as the owner, to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot 6R of Block Nine at Sunset Ranch. Staff recommends approval of minor plat 1747 with seven conditions. Item 11, minor plat 1748 for JK RK Properties LLC, Ryan Kasky as the owner, to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot 7R of Block Eight at Sunset Ranch in accordance with Section 400.3 of the Pennington County Subdivision Regulations. Staff recommends approval of minor plat 1748 with seven conditions.
All right, PJ, any items that staff would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Item five for a quick correction.
Item five. Commissioners, anyone on the commission staff would like to pull any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Audience members, those items that were just read, they're all going to be voted upon one. If you'd like to come forward and state your name and let me know what item you'd like to have pulled.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Ken Dolfino, 24126 Leaky Valley Road in Keystone. Pull number six, please.
Pull number six. Thank you very much, Ken. Any other audience members like to pull any other items that were just recently read as for our consent agenda? Seeing none, that leaves our consent agenda with items 3, 4, 6 through 11, and our regular agenda 5, I'm sorry, 3, 4, 7 through 11, and then our regular agenda 5, 6, 12 through 20. Is that correct? All right. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Jerry, roll call, please.
Rich?
Yes.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
Yes.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sonny?
Aye.
All right, PJ, thank you very much.
Item five is conditional use permit 1746 for Matt and Donna Bowman. It was to, is to live in existing residence while building a new single-family residence in a general agriculture district. The staff report is the correct recommendation, which is to continue the conditional use permit. The agenda does not have the word "continue" in it, so I just wanted to make that correction.
I noticed that. So the recommendation is to continue it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
So moved. February 26?
We're adding the word "continued" into the statement on the agenda itself. The staff report says it, but in full it would read, "To recommend to continue conditional use permit 1746 to a future planning commission meeting that would be held no later than February 26, 2018, to allow the applicant more time to bring the property into compliance."
Okay, so moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Please call a roll, Lori. Jerry?
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sonny?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. That carries us to item number six.
Good morning again.
Ken, can he just give us a quick overview? Well, unless you just have something specific to...
Just very quick.
Okay.
Notice, just wanted to be down here to make sure that, comment in favor of Mrs. Kelly's property that you have on there. I see that you are going to approve it. You recommend approval. And so I want to be on record as in support of this action. She's our next-door neighbor, and she is only there for a short period of time. The two vehicles that are there, we hardly see them because they're around a rock from us, so there are not any objection to us.
Okay.
So just want to be on record that we're in support of it.
In support of it, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other audience members have anything for item number six? Any commission members? If not, I would entertain a motion. The current recommendation is to approve conditional use permit CU 1747 with 12 conditions.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Jerry, roll call, please.
Rich?
Yes.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sonny?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item, item number seven, uh, no. 12.
Good morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item 12 is Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment PU 1711. This one was continued from the last planning commission meeting. And just to give you guys a brief update, originally he had requested to reduce the minimum required setback on both side yards to five feet for a detached garage. At the last planning commission meeting, it's my understanding that you guys had continued it so that he could provide a clearer picture of where he was putting the garage. He has since provided that. It should be included in your packet. And he has actually amended his request. He got his property resurveyed. He will be able to meet the minimum required setback. However, he does want to have a little bit of wiggle room in case of construction errors and things along those lines. So he actually would like to amend his request to reduce the minimum setback on the east property line only to 20 feet rather than 25 feet for his detached garage only. He is in the audience today. If you do have any questions for him, so staff recommends approval of Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment PU 1711 with six conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
I know that I was one of the ones that was questioning this when it came through. The recommendation is to approve with the width of the garage only. So is the area, the setback variance going to be 20 feet deep along the property line just the width of the garage? Is that the way I read that, or the entire line or the property line?
Nope, just for the width of his garage. It would only apply for his garage.
So roughly 42 feet?
Right.
Something like that? Is that what I'm seeing?
Mm-hmm.
And correct me if I'm wrong, staff. There's no other variances out there for any other setbacks, any other requests in the area that have been approved in the past? And that's one of the big concerns from everyone else out there. They don't want to set a precedence. I just want to make sure that there's no other...
In the entire development, I'm not entirely certain. In this particular vicinity, no. I did look at the neighboring properties. I didn't look at every single property in this entire PUD, but I did look at the surrounding properties, and there aren't any on any of the surrounding ones. He did also get a letter from the neighbor to the east that is okay with him reducing this setback.
So the neighbor that he's going to be near their property line, he's got their permission to do it?
Yes, yep.
Any further questions for staff? Any members of the audience like to speak on this item? Oh, go ahead, sir. Come on up. Go ahead and state your name. I couldn't see you behind.
Oh, sorry.
Matthew Arena?
Yes, sir.
I'm just available if you have any additional questions.
Okay, any questions for Matthew? All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, so that takes us to the recommendation of approval of PUD, minor PUD, 1711, with six conditions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion. However, I noticed that in the agenda, it actually still says the minimum setback from 25 to five on the east property line. So how do we correct that or make sure that this is all right?
That's the original advertised request, so that's what has to stay that way.
Okay.
So do we have to make a different amendment to it?
Your motion will state the 20, but the original request was the five. And since he's actually asking for less than he did previously, we don't make a change to the hearing letters of the original request.
Okay.
He was asking for four, we'd start all over again.
So I understand. So then I would make a motion for approval of the Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment PU 17-11 with the six conditions as written in the packet.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
No.
Sonny?
Aye.
Motion carries. That takes us to item 13.
Sure. Item 13 is rezon 1711 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1710, to rezone 20 acres from general agriculture district to suburban residential district, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from PUD-sensitive to suburban residential district. The applicant or agent is Cory Weisbeck. And again, this is affecting 20 acres, all three properties that he owns. The three properties in question are outlined in red here, with the top being 10 acres and the bottom two being five each. Each property has its own history with residents. Each one is addressed. There's double wide, old double wides on a couple of them. One has been removed. One is currently at some point going to be replaced. The bottom lot is the one that has the applicant's residence on it. It also does have a detached garage, which was built, what appears to be from Department of Equalization records in 2013. It appears to be too close to the property line. It is currently zoned low-density residential, I'm sorry, general agriculture, and has 25-foot setback all the way around. According to the applicant, the garage was built to 24 feet. Now, that would normally, does require a lot size setback variance. With the applicant's request to go from general agriculture to suburban residential, that would change the side yard setbacks to eight feet and also have to be in compliance with all existing easements. So it would bring the non-compliant garage into compliance and also would allow the applicant better use of the property. As you can see from the topography, there's not a lot of buildable area. So the applicant's looking to maximize the buildable area on the three lots through this, through these requests. And also, in conjunction with this, is that comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use from planned unit development sensitive to suburban residential district, and staff doesn't see any problem with that. The request was routed through the interdepartmental review, and no items of concern came back. The applicant's request appears to be in harmony with the existing residential use in the area, and therefore staff would recommend approval of rezon 1711 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1710.
Any questions for staff?
Just, why did, why did you call it PUD-sensitive?
That's what the future land use designation is. We don't have a definition of that. We have a definition of PUD. PUDs can be residential or commercial in nature.
Right.
We believe that when this was originally done years ago, when they didn't know what to do with areas for future land use, they made it PUD-sensitive because it could be anything. Most of the county's future land use is PUD-sensitive.
Okay, just making sure so we don't, like, there's a water issue or a drainage issue or something like that, so, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any further questions? Go ahead, Kathy.
Sure. I am, I'm kind of struggling with this, and I, and, you know, when I think of suburban residential, I think of a very different situation than what is out here. And, you know, you think of smaller lots and, you know, suburban residential. And so I'm just, I understand the issues at hand, that there's a setback issue, there's topography and so on, but I'm just not convinced that this is the right fix for that problem. And then going back to the, you know, the zoning ordinance, I mean, it's, it just, you know, the intent of suburban residential district is to establish medium-density residential areas where central water and/or sewer is provided, you know, on and on, 20,000 square feet lot size minimum. And I just think, this isn't it. And, and so I just, I'm really struggling with, is this the right fix? I mean, are there other fixes that could be applied that would be more consistent with really the reality of those lots out there?
The applicant does have the option, excuse me, of doing setback variances on each lot, so there would be three required, if that's what they were looking to do. These lots, even if they were approved to be suburban residential, would be larger than other lots in the median area, including the low-density residential's, which are to the northeast.
Yep. But there's nothing to say that sometime in the future, there couldn't be some efforts made, applications made, to create smaller lots and to create more of a traditional suburban residential area, is there?
For him to do that on these lots, or are you saying...
I mean, at some time. I mean, once it gets rezoned.
It is possible. Topography is going to play a big role into this. We don't like to say any lot is not buildable, because with technology and enough money, you can build anywhere on anything. He's looking to make the best use of the land as it is today. With the comprehensive plan, this is one of the areas that's probably going to be identified as having to have zoning change. But that, staff did not take that into consideration with his recommendation.
But going back to the topography, I mean, it strikes me as that on the east side, you've got some buildable area, and then you've got, you know, kind of a steep slope, but then it gets flat again. So, and, I mean, I look at that, and I'm thinking, there's all kinds of lots that could be built in there. And so I, I just, it just, I mean, I understand now there's no interest in smaller lots and subdividing that and so on, but, you know, we're, to me, that we're making a long-term change to solve kind of a short-term issue.
And in that flat area to the west, on each one of those lots, they're bordered by National Forest Service.
And so what's the implication there?
No access.
Yeah, no access. But it looks like the property owner might be here to answer some more questions or give us some insight there, Kathy. If you give him a chance, come on up, sir. State your name.
Cory Weisbeck. There is no access to that west flat area. I mean, I live on a cliff. It's like 300, 400 feet down. So if I was to ever develop that, it would cost me probably a million bucks just to build a road down there. So it's not feasible. The only reason I'm asking for this is I would like to build another building on that center lot, and it's only 90 feet wide. So 25 feet, my building's only going to be 40 foot wide, whereas if I can do eight-foot setbacks, then my building can be, you know, close to 80 feet wide, which I would prefer.
Have you considered just getting setback variances?
I asked. It, to me, honestly, it doesn't matter. Variance would be fine. But talking with the staff, they're like, well, you might have a better chance to get this pushed through versus trying to file for three variances.
Thank you.
Any further, further questions for...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Lori.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The limited ag area to the north and the east, can someone describe the use of that property?
PJ?
What was that last part of the question?
The limited ag, I think I have it right, yeah, the dark green to the north, and there's a, there's a little strip of general ag in between. And then there's, then there's a limited ag portion kind of to the northeast before you get to the low-density residential. Can you describe, can you describe the use of those properties?
Residential.
So there's, there's homes on those large lots to the north and northeast. And so we could envision that that entire portion there is going to someday be, you know, it's all going to be suburban residential.
Or low-density.
It's hard to envision it, to say that for sure, knowing the Comprehensive Plan Amendment's going to change zoning all the way across the county. But from the land use out there and what has been done in the past, I keep looking over at the screen, sorry, what the applicant is asking to do, he hasn't made any mention of wanting to subdivide the properties and just keep one residence on each one.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Deb, you want to look like you might have had a...
No, I just couldn't move approval.
Okay. All right, PJ, we have no further questions. Thank you to you, Mr. Weisbeck. Any other item, or any other members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, the current recommendation, recommendation is for approval of rezon 1711 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 1710. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Jerry, can you take roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
No.
Sonny?
Aye.
Motion carries. That takes us to item, where are we on? 13, 14, right?
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Item 14 is Ordinance Amendment OA 1702. It's for the mining ordinance. And at the last planning commission meeting, you guys had directed staff to meet with the committee to go over some of the proposed changes from the public comment and come back with another recommendation. The committee has not had an opportunity to meet. They will meet tomorrow. So we are looking to continue this to a later date. However, because we would not like to wait two more weeks till the next planning commission meeting, the next agenda item is requesting that maybe we propose some special meeting dates in order to hear this ordinance amendment.
Do you have a specific dates in mind?
Anytime after tomorrow, and then given us the adequate timeframe for public notice. So what would that put us at? Friday at the earliest?
You have to ask Holly. Did you ask Holly already?
No.
Ms. Jerry?
I've been out sick, I'm sorry, and so...
You have to post it, post notice in the paper.
I think our bylaws say 24. Let me look at our bylaws. I think they say 24 hours.
Yeah, we want to give people a little bit more than...
Yeah, emergency meetings can be called by the chair for 24 hours.
And we're looking at doing that primarily because of our timeline, because it's, the moratorium ends on the April sometime, is that correct?
Yeah, it's also the next agenda item to officially, so to keep these two separate, yes. You can do 24 hours or more, or you could do 48 hours or a week, or you could plan four or five meetings. It'll be up to you with the next item.
Okay.
How about next Monday? Anybody?
Does anybody have a meeting scheduled?
Yep. We have a meeting tomorrow.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Lori.
I'd like to just point out the next Monday's a holiday for some people.
We also have the 204G, the Animal Keeping Committee meeting that morning.
That morning? That is the morning that the 204G, also...
When, you want to do Wednesday, the 17th?
The 17th?
Anybody have a problem with the 17th? The morning? Lori?
I'm good.
No, that would be fine.
Sonny, Kathy?
All right for me.
Okay.
Rich? All right, so then at least we can plan that date.
I'll be here with you guys.
To continue it to that and do it as a emergency meeting? Is that correct?
It'd be a special planning session.
Then we would have to advertise.
I... Are we still doing nine o'clock?
Uh, that's what I was about to clarify. Good, good question.
Nine.
I'm good with nine. Everyone's still good with nine.
I think we just have to post it on our website and...
Okay.
Staff, you good with nine Wednesday, the seventeenth? Okay.
I'll make it work.
All right, so I would entertain a motion for continuing it to the seventeenth.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Jerry?
Okay. Is this the roll call vote to continue ordinance amendment to the January seventeenth at nine AM?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, Rich?
Yes.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And Sunny?
Aye.
Chairman, just, um, um, if anybody'd like to come to the meeting, it's at eight-thirty tomorrow, if you'd like to, um, see some changes or have any questions to make it a little bit comprehensible, um, when it comes up to the planning commission.
Absolutely. So just make sure that, uh, if you want to be there, please be there.
Eight-thirty. We'll have donuts and coffee.
Is it going to be in the same room, right over here?
Yes.
All right, awesome.
Thank you, Travis.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Lori.
We will get copies of what the committee discusses tomorrow.
I would say as soon as they are finalized, and we can send them out either tomorrow or the following day.
Yeah, probably you won't get them tomorrow, but you'll get them in the next couple days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lori.
Thank you. That carries us to item fifteen.
Item fifteen is related item. Um, you already took care of adding one additional meeting in January to, uh, the seventeenth at nine AM. The memo basically kind of goes through what was already discussed. Um, it does also discuss that the moratorium expires on April fifth of two thousand and eighteen, and in discussion with the commission managers, um, the desire and the hope is that it is passed up to the, the board, uh, or the planning commission makes a recommendation to the board no later than January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, to allow the, the commission staff to do what they need to do to get it to the board level, so that as far as the time goes, we could meet that moratorium timeline. Um, are there any, so basically the question is, is there any other, uh, meetings you'd like to schedule in January for this?
Let's see how the first...
Get it done in two.
If the committee gets, let's see how the committee does. And with some of the, some of the, uh, issues at hand, I think we can hit a lot of those. But one thing we're not doing, and we're recommending to the board of commissioners, is, um, to have the planning staff and the, um, state attorney's office work on, and C two mining, gold mining, that kind of stuff. We're just doing more of the aggregate in that committee. Um, so when people are bringing up, um, the issues on the C two and different areas that we haven't covered, we're going to do that through planning staff and, um, the state's attorney's office. We didn't feel we had enough, um, what you call it? It, it takes a lot to get to that next step and, and what those areas are gonna cover. How about this? And this, as you see, has taken us, I don't know, how long have we been working on this, Brittany? Six months or something? So, um, anything past that, um, that we don't have on there, we can always include in the next planning, um, ordinance that we have moving forward. PJ will take care of that with the staff.
A lot of long weekends.
I'll tell you, it's, it's a, it's a hard thing to do when you're redoing ordinances. And this is one of the ones that, um, has been, we, we've done, redid what, um, alternative energy construction permits and now mining permits, so...
VHRs.
It's been a great experience being the chair of those, but it takes a lot of work, and we appreciate everybody that's helped us. The staff has been amazing, so thank you.
Just also for planning commission, keep in mind, that's only, we've only listed about five ordinance amendments that we do. We are looking to do the entire book in the next year or two. That's part of what Matrix is helping us with, so it'll be in front of you prob- probably for most of your time sitting on the planning commission.
You guys picked a awesome time to be on here.
So right now, uh, to discuss this item, you're looking at January seventeenth at nine AM, January twenty-second at nine AM, and that still leaves you, looks like, uh, seven business days if you want to do anything after the twenty-second.
Roger that. And there's nothing we need to take action on for item fifteen, correct?
Unless you want to.
Nope. I don't have any. So that carries us to item sixteen, County Board Report.
Uh, County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendation from their December fourth, two thousand and seventeen, planning commission meeting.
Any questions for PJ? All right. Items from the public. Anyone in the public like to speak on any items that we've talked about today, bring up anything new? Y'all look like y'all want to say something. No? All right. You'll talk tomorrow? Okay. Well, thank you for coming and giving us your input. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom and Bill. All that extra work you did.
All right, uh, that takes us to, I see, seeing no items from the public, then, uh, items from staff. Item eighteen.
Item eighteen, first item is item A, Building Permit Report. So this is kind of a year-end summary. Uh, we took in, as far as single-family residences, we took in eighty-seven building permits over, um, which was seventy-six last year, which was an increase by fourteen percent. Uh, mobile homes seem to be down, uh, this year by a little over ten percent. And again, a lot of these numbers are showing a hundred plus or a hundred minus. Again, that's because we changed our code. So starting in January, we'll kind of even out a little bit. But overall, in, uh, two thousand and seventeen, we took in seven hundred and six, uh, well, we logged seven hundred and six building permits and over six hundred and forty-two last year, which was an overall increase of ten. And just for January alone last year, again, from seventeen to eighteen, last year we only took in thirty-five building permits, and I believe already this year, what is this, eight days in, we're up to, over fifty. So if that's any indication, uh, two thousand and eighteen might be a busy year.
Great. Awesome. Any questions for PJ? All right. B, animal, special animal keeping.
Sure. Just a reminder that the first meeting for the Special Animal Keeping Committee, or the two oh four G Committee, meets January fifteenth with, which is a Monday, from nine to ten AM in the conference room up at the planning, planning department.
And there's, uh, the following, not the following Monday, but the second Monday, uh, two Mondays later, will be the second one, and then we'll let the committee determine when the meetings are going to be.
Who's the, do we have a chair and a vice chair on that, or a chair on the animal keeping committee?